At six o'clock, home media door. We do have a forum present.
So Mayor, Council, tonight, we have discussion of the update of the Park Master Plan. So one of the first tasks that did our new Parks and Recreation Director, Stacy and I, was the requirement to get this plan updated. It does have to be updated every five years. That's really kind of a qualifying factor related to grant applications, which in this area is very, very important to the city. So she did an excellent job working with half on this update. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy.
All right. Thank you. Mayor, Council, Park fans, Stacy and I, Director of the Parks and Recreation Department, Lenny, you, path associates, we're going to give you a little update of where we are in the master plan process. As City Manager said, sorry, you guys learned to work on the buttons here. We're coming to the tail end of this process. We've gone through our public input phase, we've been working with staff and the team to develop some recommendations for you to review tonight. And we'll be moving into the final approval process in the month of March. After we visit with y'all, we'll have a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow and go back for formal adoption with the Park Board and the 2025 group shortly before we bring it back to you at the end of March. And I'm going to turn it over to Lenny so that he can talk a little bit about what process we've gone through up until this point, and then I'll jump back in, talk a little bit about our goals.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. And so we, part of this process, we had a very extensive public engagement process. And we did this over a one-day vision event in October of 2017. There, we had over 60 different representatives from key stakeholders to the advisory board committee. We also had an online telephone survey. We also went out and got engagement during Western Days and got a lot of feedback. So tonight, I'm going to present to you all the results of some of those findings. But in part of this process, we go through some of the gen items, is look at the goals and objectives of the plan. We also did a very detailed assessment, a mapping of the existing parks and facilities that you have here within the city, as well as looking at the trails, what's built, but also what's proposed in the future there. And then, as Stacy had mentioned earlier, that we're looking at the draft recommendations and priorities in which we're presenting to you tonight, this evening. So this slide right here is basically a result of the public involvement process. Some of the major things that was, as a result, was to look at expanding the natural green space. This is also part of the Vision 2025 Plan that you guys have worked on. And so we wanted to make sure that we're building upon that. We want to make sure there's a balance between preserving the natural areas and providing access for both residents and visitors here within the city. We want to make sure that we maintain an authentic historic character, incorporate history into our parks or interpretation as part of the signage, possibly. Also, look at provide trail connections within the city and neighboring communities. That was a very high priority. You're going to see that as a repeating soundbite throughout the presentation, how they want to connect to other areas, as well as enhance and build upon our trail network here within the city. One thing that also came out of the, some of the comments, all paths lead to Leela and also lead to downtown. And so the thought of connectivity and access, these are two very key resources and destinations here within the city. And so we want to make sure they were providing access to these areas and community. This plan also wants to look at reflecting the growing diversity of culture, age, income within the city of Louisville. Those are some things that we've heard. Also, prepare for the growth and annexation of Castle Hills. We've had a lot of input on that topic. There's nothing that's negative, but we should embrace that, that growth there. And so how do we do that? By looking at the parks and trails that they have as resources and how that can help complement what you have here in the city. And then lastly, expand the marketing and communication of parks and programs, basically getting the word out to your residents, to the citizens, but also to your neighboring communities about some great amenities that you have here in the city of Louisville. This next slide is, you know, we talked about what are some of the most important action items for the city to pursue as we start to look at this park and the trail, the parks plan. Acquire land for future parks and open space was one of the top priorities, but it's also tied with expanding the trail network and trail system. And so preserving and understanding and identifying this land for acquisition, but how do we expand our trail network that would provide additional access, connectivity to the parks, schools, and other destinations within the city? The other question was, what facility amenity does Louisville need? And this is kind of a word or wordplay. And so we talk about, we poll the citizens, and the ones that kind of come up to the top, we make those larger. And the ones that are a little smaller, those a little bit less on the number of rankings. So trails, again, come up very high. Parks, pools is another item that comes up. And the thought is looking at some type of indoor facility for my pool access. And then go over to the programming and activity side, you know, what one program or activity does Louisville need? Swimming comes up to the top of that list. Soccer, more activities at Leela or access to Leela. You guys have done a great job of providing access there. But you know, what's one of the activities could be provided there once you get to that destination? From the online survey, we had over 556 respondents. And that's a pretty good sampling of people here within the city. Thirty-six percent of respondents are over age 55 and 26% have lived in the city for over 20 years. So there's a pretty good level of people that have lived within the community, but also the age respondents is a result of that as well. Ninety-three percent agree or strongly agree with the city to foster the green centerpiece, again, building upon the Vision 2025 component, and they also extend it. The top-rated bicycle and trail opportunities, you know, where should these opportunities be provided? They want to make sure they're connecting to existing trails that you have here within the city, connect to schools, also assist and trail bike facility crossings. They want to have safe access to these places when they started to cross some of the major terrails and roadways here within the city. This map over here to my left, your right, shows the, where these respondents were coming from. So we have about six different teams, five different sectors. So we've got the that northeast part, we've kind of got a central western area, we've got the southwest, we've got the central core, and then we got the area out to the east, which is kind of more the Castle Hills. And so we kind of see the number of respondents, where they're located at geographically within the city. The next question we asked is how important is for Louisville to build additional items? And so some of the top-rated facilities are outdoor facilities, again, multi-use trails, again, that came up high on the list. Looking at natural habitat and nature areas, how do we protect and preserve our natural environment? Playgrounds is another, one of the top three items. Moving on down here, we're looking at some of the top-rated sports athletic fields. And they've talked about having youth soccer fields, youth baseball, as well as youth softball fields, or some of the top-rated athletic-type facilities that they're wanting here in the community. Looking on the indoor components, some of the top indoor recreation needs, indoor swimming. I think that may will be met once we, the new facility is opened up. And so we'll meet that need of the pool, swimming, as we saw earlier, as part of some of their responses. Indoor walking or jogging tracks is another key component, and an active adult center. And so we're, a lot of the planning that we're doing right now, the changing demographics, you're not seeing, well, you're seeing the senior center, but the senior centers are really at 50 and 55 years old and up. And so they're wanting to change that vernacular and maybe start to call these more active adult centers versus a senior center. So those are some of the new trends that are happening out there. We're active now. We're not seniors.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we go back to page six, where you have the word clouds, I'm sorry, I can't talk anymore. It's very, so, 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 some of the, let's take baseball, they're under trails, this is fairly small, it's out there, but it's a fairly small word. Golf, much larger, volleyball, much larger. And then I drop over to page eight, and they don't even appear in facilities. What's the explanation?
That's a good question. Not sure why they're not appearing there. I know the soccer appears on the facility.
Soccer, swimming?
Yeah, maybe, maybe it was such a low response on that, that it did not pop up there. And so we kind of took the top eight to 10 different items, and then those were the ones that popped up on either the amenity side or the programming side. And so baseball, man, I reached that.
Well, no, yeah, I said basketball, it said baseball, it's basketball, this is another, baseball doesn't, it shows up big on page eight, doesn't show up here at all. And golf and volleyball show up fairly large here and don't show up on page eight. So there seems to be some disconnect between, I don't know how the work, I asked this question earlier, how was the cloud developed, the word cloud development? Maybe it would help to understand how the word cloud was built, but typically you would anticipate words that are fairly large, and the word cloud would loom fairly large in the, you know, as the study goes on.
I think when you're looking at, on there, this, this are the respondents from the questionnaire on Western Days. And then the one you're asking about is on the respondents from the survey that was out for a month and a half, was online. It had 556 respondents, I believe.
So two different.
So they're two different, they were, they were the same, the Western Days survey was, had some of the same questions that the online did, but not all of them.
So the two surveys were not conducted, I mean, they weren't, the questions weren't the same?
The questions were the same on Western Days, there just weren't as many as there were online. So it was a condensed version at Western Days.
Okay. Does it strike you as odd that you got this kind of high response for some items at Western Days and so little, for example, baseball, and then it flips around when you go to the online?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it really depends on the respondents. And the good thing about Western Days is that you're getting a lot of people from internally to the city, but also you're getting people from adjacent communities. And so their need or response for baseball may not be the same response or need for people that may have answered an online survey. And so you may, you may have different answers, and that may not have been one of them. And I think we do have a number of respondents that actually filled out the questionnaire in our report here.
And the online average was over 50, correct?
Yeah, it was 55.
Yeah, that's going to skew things. That's where I would go with that. If you have a younger audience that's responding, I think at Western Days would be my guess.
Right. And then also remember, the more respondents you have, the more normalized the averages are. So this could be where we had some outliers in there, just because this was 56 respondents. But that's why we do several types of input, so that one group can't dominate any of the instruments that we use. That's why you use surveys, you do online surveys, you do stakeholder input sessions, you have meetings like this where there's some engagement.
As long as we understand that page eight, we're looking at predominantly 50 and above group, correct?
That was a high percentage, yes. Another one of the questions, the city's established a series of priorities to direct future parks and recreation, I actions. How strongly do you agree and disagree with the following statements? And so we looked at the, some of the top priorities, and we look at, you know, if you take the strongly agree, which is the dark green, the agree, which is the kind of that lighter green, the gray is the no opinion, then the disagree and/or strongly disagree. There is a high percentage of agreeance on city wanting, citizens wanting to expand the trail network. The other one also is to look at land acquisition. Another top priority is to look at land for future park, open space development, and also plant more trees. And plant more trees also came up a lot, a lot of respondents that we received on other parts, other surveys. You know, this is pretty neat right here, creating sustainable park areas, such as butterfly way stations. That's, you know, that's something that's kind of a new trend that's happening here. We're also in the butterfly way within this area of Louisville. And so how to respond to that and provide stations that would start to provide access to these butterflies? Stacy, you want to say something?
No, I think I'm up next. So yeah, say a little bit more. All right. So we took all of the responses that we've had from the surveys, our public input meetings, stakeholder meetings from the Parks Board, and also our steering committee. And we developed a set of six goals and with some follow-up objectives for them. Support the big moves included in the 2025 plan. This first plan was developed before the 2025 plan was developed. So we literally wanted to go back and make sure that there was a strong connection. Obviously, extending the green, you saw in the survey, is very, very important. And we'll be also looking for our opportunities that we can preserve some green spaces. We work our way through the small area plans. We also wanted to create a balance between preserving natural areas and providing access for residents and visitors. And this was really big when we got to the conversation about Leela. Making sure that, one comment was, just making sure the city doesn't want Leela to become Disneyland, that we don't want to overdevelop it. And we are making sure that people are rest assured that we want to preserve Leela for what it is, a natural area that we get to explore every once in a while, that it's a great place for our furry, feathered, and scaly little friends to be as well. And that we would be working with our partners to do that. And then also that we want to use sustainable practices for developing and maintaining our parks and recreation facilities. And that's looking at things where we can say, are we over-maintaining some of our open space in our park system? Can we back up a little bit, create butterfly way stations, allow the prairie restoration to happen, have some native plants, and then be able to redirect those resources in some of the places that we have a little bit more highly manicured. And one of the things that we also want to do is also make sure that we have the resources to develop what's, what's coming up. And look at our park plan dedication ordinance, and always measure that against our needs that we have, and how development, new development, new residents put a stress on the park system, so we can keep up with that. We look at wanting to develop connected trail and bike way system that provides links not only to parks, but places that people, you know, live, work, and play. You know, we want to go ahead and start looking for additional funding to help some of our high-priority trails, particularly some of those connectors with the cog. We've got some opportunities along the DCTA trail, coordinating with some of those regional efforts to connect down to Carrollton and Capel, but also finishing out some of the links within the city. We want to make sure that we provide a variety of park and recreation facilities. Even though some of those words stood out that were big, there are a lot of words on there, and people have a diverse need of the park system. One of the things that rose up that almost made it onto the lists of sporting facilities was cricket. Making sure that we've got places where different people who join our community can play in a manner that they're used to and meets their needs. And also introduces us to the new culture. We also want to be able to promote our park system and facilities. I've talked about how, how many times have you gone and talked about Leela, and people are like, what? I didn't even know that was there? That happens with every facility and program that the Parks and Recreation Department has, and we need to do a better job of communicating what we have. So we developed these goals and objectives. And then Lenny and his team worked with our team to kind of look at, well, how can our system, right now as it exists, accommodate these goals and objectives? And what do we need to go acquire and develop in order to do, fill some of the gaps? I'll turn it back over to Lenny.
So from part of our assessment, we looked at five or six different categories for park system. And we really came up with another one, was pocket parks. And pocket parks are typically less than five acres in size, and serve as typically natural areas, or maybe open space, may have a bench or a trail connection as part of a trail head. But typically, they're small in size, and they're capable of sprinkled throughout the city. Neighborhood parks are typically five to 10 acres in size and serve residents within a half-mile radii or walk-in distance. Community parks are a little bit larger, they're typically 25 acres in size. These may have some of your larger recreational items, larger walking trails and connectivity. They may be some of your athletic fields, facilities. Regional parks, typically, these are 100 acres in size. Leela is, again, one of those regional-type destination-type facilities you have here in the city. Special purpose parks, Wayne Ferguson Plaza is that type of unique park that creates an identity. People start to go to this facility because of some of the unique characteristics of it, and also the architectural styles of it. And linear parks, you have a great green belt system here that's along your creeks and drainage ways. And so that provides access to the residents and as far as connectivity to schools, parks, and other areas of the city. All right. So when we look to talk about the different typologies of parks, we've got neighborhood parks, again, this shows that half-mile walk-in radius for that. And so these are typically your smaller parks, and they're really located on that western side of the city. We do have one, that's on the eastern side of the city, that's there. The other type of park are the, are the community parks, those are the little bit larger parks. And so we're starting to fill in that gap on that western side of forest, community parks. The next level are the larger community parks, and that's look at Leela or Lake Park. Also Railroad Park is that other large facility that's typically one to two mile in walk-in distance. People typically drive to these type of parks because it's larger, a lot more amenities for citizens to enjoy. Then the last one is the special purpose parks. And again, we talk about Wayne Ferguson Plaza, but also you kind of see there's areas down here in the south and over to the west. What is start, what is, this map starts to tell you that there are certain gaps in the city that is not filled by parks. And so when we look at this system, we want to understand, you know, where are the gaps? And also, how do you get access to those? Another study we looked at as far as this plan is the 10-minute walk park initiative. And this is developed by the Urban Land Institute and Trust for Public Lands, where they're wanting to establish a 10-minute walk and have access to the park. This is part of that healthy initiative, getting people out to their, to the park system, providing access to a high-quality park or green space. And so this is a very important aspect of this plan, is how do we further look at what we have here as far as amenities, but how do we provide access to these parks? This map right here kind of starts to show you that gap I was talking about earlier. And so the neighborhood parks, the community parks, the special purpose parks, all of those are shown here in the green or blue. But the red is the areas that we're showing some deficiency or lack of parks within those spaces. But what this does not take into account, if you look over to the east, it's Castle Hills, we don't have an accurate inventory. That's something that we're working on right now to get a better understanding of that. And so once that information is gathered, then we'll be able to see this gap slowly start to dissipate and be removed in the area. But we do have an active area that is deficient of parks within this lower area and southern area of the city. Another unique item that we looked at is the Trust for Public Lands land analysis. And basically, we have the areas of the parks, and this is typically a result of a half-mile walk or access to a park. And we start to look at where our needs are. And so we have high, which is the red, the orange, that means it marks a high, then there's a kind of a lighter orange there. And you kind of start to see where we're starting to be a little bit more deficient of park access to parks. Right now, there's about 61% of the citizens in the city have access that's within a walk-in distance. And so we're wanting to increase that by having, adding an additional park plan here, looking at that barrier such as 35, it's such a barrier there. But how do we provide better access to these parks? And where do these parks need to be located in the city? So the next part is one of our preliminary recommendations. And this plan is also running concurrently with the small area plans. And so they identified two zones, one here is Old Town North, and the other areas in southwest Louisville. And so they've been doing their study. We've been talking about how can this affect the plan in a positive manner. And so we've taken their study, looked at some of the drainage channels and how can create better access along those green belt areas. We looked at the rodeo property as an opportunity to really enhance that piece of land that's there and get better use, to make it more transparent and active, make it really that space in the area. And also looking at additional connections along some of your roadway networks. Again, to have where parks and streets are really interrelated together and provide better access into downtown. This was also looked at in that southwest Louisville. Again, how do we activate the streets to become, provide better access, connectivity from a trail network component? And then what opportunities are there for green spaces to create park-like environments within, within these two different zones? And so the blue are additional ideas or opportunities for park-like elements within areas of this special area plan. And also over here on the High Point Oaks, there's another opportunity for park access. The schools are, is another opportunity. You know, how can we look at school sites with the land that's adjacent to parks or land that they have, may have available for playgrounds and open space, or maybe in practice facilities? And so we started to look at Central Elementary, Deegan Elementary, and other schools as part of that opportunity to provide green space and recreation within, within these districts that are missing here. Castle Hill Elementary is another opportunity for a school site, as well as Rock Brook Elementary down here in the south. Other green space opportunities is open green belt. How can we look at that piece of land there and add some type of playground type of facility? And, you know, looking at identifying these areas within that small area plan in the southwest, you know, looking at opportunities to provide park space within those, within those two zones. Special purpose areas, again, Leela, you know, the nature center there. How do we enhance the rodeo site to provide multipurpose type of uses and have more access and more transparency there? The nature park at Valley Vista Park is another opportunity to provide recreation and open space. And lastly, East Hill Park, you know, how do we, it gets us a large tract of land that's over here on the west side of the area that's built at East Hill Park. So how do we look at developing that, those large parcels of land for either active or some type of passive type of recreation? And what is the best and highest best use for that land there? And these are just other opportunities up here in Leela for citywide access. So we look at the plan, what's existing, what's proposed of land. So we still got a really good distribution of parks, what's existing, the dash lines, there's what's proposed. And we've got some proposed opportunities for either school sites, conjunction with land, expanding East Hill Park over here, looking at enhancing the rodeo grounds and some of the other areas of Leela. And these are additional areas to explore. You know, once these public facilities have been mapped, mainly on the east side over here at Castle Hills, and, you know, these are just that overlap of potential sites down here in the southwest over there. Now, we did take a look at the 2011 Trails and Ash Plant, and there's been a lot of work that's been done over the last several years. And so this is what the, some of the existing facilities. The purple is the regional velo web, which is the large transportation connection across the downpour metroplex. The yellow are some of the high priority The yellow are some of the high priority trails that we've looked at and identified as providing access, connectivity. Then we have a series of on-street trail connections, which are some of the yellow and dash lines on that, on that map there. And so what we did was we overlaid from the 2011 plan to looking at things that are either under design, which is garbage trail, the DCTA trail is under design. We've also identified this is a major priority trail connection here. So those are things that we want to look at and pay attention to when the next round of funding comes out as one of those high priority items. We also identified this connection going south into Carrollton and Cappell's, another major southern connection here. And so once you see that this is all complete and there's a really strong south connection from Deegan all the way into Carrollton, leading down to Dallas. We also looked at other connections over here from Lewisville to Grapevine, and that's another high, high priority item there.
So based on that assessment and our goals, we came up with some priority action steps to consider as we move forward because, you know, plans are great, but I want them to be useful and to guide what our decisions are going to be for the next five to 10 years. So one of the first things that we talked about was modernizing our existing parks with new amenities and programs is yes, we need to be cognizant that we need to acquire additional land, but we need to make sure that our current facilities are up to date and meeting the needs. So making sure that we have ADA accessibility, that our playgrounds are safe, we replace some of the entry signs and do a better job of directing people through the park system. One of the previous things that we had talked about in the previous plan was looking at Lake Park for development there and then also at the East Hill Park, as Lenny mentioned. And then one of the first things that we had talked about when I got here is talking about what are we going to do with the amphitheater over off of Vista Ridge and that sports complex? And how we deal with the issue of flooding and how we might repurpose those areas? Of course, we want to continue our development of the multi-use trails, as I said, and I will pound this all the time. We need wayfinding. People who've never been to Lewisville should be able to get on a trail anywhere and get to where they're going without having to look at a map in their pocket, or maybe they could do it online, but our signage should be, should, should help us get places without having to mention questions with staff. We need to create access points along the, wonderful, Stacy, you got a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a comment, our signage should also suggest places people could go that they may not have.
That's true. Lila! And all those places, you're right. We need to create access points along the fork of the Train River, which we're working on, but there might be some extra places that we, we could look at along the way. Of course, constructing new parks and trails and open, open space in the underserved areas that we identified. I really do think that it merits discussion with LISD to talk about opening access to our elementary and middle schools. It's the same tax dollars building them and their open space. We need to create a neighborhood park at the Oak Bend Park Green Belt, which is kind of over off of Rock Brook area. That might give us, it would help us create, fill one of those gaps. The Castle Hills area, and then of course, investigating the development if East Hill Park is a community park.
Good question.
Yes.
Where did the, where did the assessment that developing a neighborhood park in the Castle Hills area come from? If we're still in the process of getting data for what parks they currently have?
On this one? Well, one, we don't know if it's sufficient, and it might be that it exists and we just need to bring them up to standards. But there's also space over there beyond that Castle Hills area that would, there would be a, there'd be a gap of a, of a 10-minute walk to a park. So we still may need to consider that depending on what's going on. I know we've had some opportunities coming up there.
We're still getting data from 1A to discern which parks are only being operated by the HOA.
Yeah.
Versus the district.
They have a hard time understanding that at this point. But I read that as Castle Hills, and I should have read that as near Castle Hills as well because we do have, we do have Lewisville proper east of that, so.
Maybe we should change that terminology so it's a little bit more clear. We want to incorporate sustainable areas within the parks. I've talked a little bit about that, especially along the creek areas. Develop the Valley Vista property into a nature park. That's going to be one of our highest priorities moving forward, looking to see if we can get some grant money to that. We have a concept plan coming out of the MGC design process, so I think that'll be a really fun project. In the previous plan, it talked about building an entirely new tennis facility, which we really didn't see the call for this time, especially with some of the facilities that LISD has in the, in the area and if we can have a good relationship with them. But we do want to probably resurface the courts that are over by the Sun Valley Park. Obviously, constructing a nature center at Lila is going to be one of our priorities. And incorporating park trails, recreation, open space as I, as identified in the small area plans, we want to make sure that this effort is in step with everything that the planning department's pulling, going through. And then as Old Town continues to redevelop, we need to look at those areas that we might pick up small pocket parks. People who are going to be living in these multifamily dense developments are going to want a place to walk their dogs. And if the only place in town is Wayne Ferguson Plaza, that's going to create a hassle. So we're going to need those little bits of space to see if we can accommodate that. We also got a really big call to look at, at Fred Herring at Recreation Center and maybe repurposing that, not only from a staff perspective, but, you know, we're really close to the high school there, and it might be an opportunity for us to connect with the kids in a deeper way. Renovate the Hedrick House. I got so many phone calls from people who think that this is a gem, but we just need to invest a little bit more money into that and make it a little bit prettier. And then of course, with the Glenmore Savage Senior Community Room, we kind of need to update some of the furniture in there and the, the technology. And then one of the things that became clear as we were working through this is that we probably do need to look at bringing a park planner or landscape architect on staff to help facilitate some of these, the growth in the park system that overseeing some of these projects, especially when we're looking at modernizing our current park system and how we can do that in a more effective manner.
As well as beautification of our medias.
Yes.
All that starts tying together, and you'll hear us discuss a lot about that on Saturday with the smaller areas.
So right now, we're, we've got to the point where we're finalizing the report, and we're taking some of these recommendations and action steps and determining which priority they would fall in, which will be high, medium, and low priority. We're probably about a week and a half away from having that report done. We go to the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow evening. Parks Board and the 2025 Committee are doing a joint meeting on the 14th of March, and then we'll be back in front of City Council for approval of the plan on March 19th. Once that, the approval comes from you, Lenny and I work to send the, the plan up to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department to review and approve and give us the stamp of approval so that we can start competing for grants to do, to execute some of this.
And that deadline is very important, Stacy, you might explain that to the council.
Correct. So Texas Parks and Wildlife requires that your update happen every five years. The previous plan was approved in March of 2013. And if there's a gap, you have to kind of go explain why there is a gap. And I think that, you know, with the opportunities we've got with the fall grant schedule with TPW, I hate to waste any time explaining why we were a little late versus putting together grant applications. Any questions?
I don't think so. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Next time is the regular session. We'll start with the invocation by Councilman Gilmore, pledge to the American and Texas flags by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels. That's okay with you, Neil. You're not, that ain't getting taken away from you, did it?
No, it's.
Okay. Now we're done with public hearings, item one. Any questions? Item two. Consent, item three. Item four. Item five.
Actually, I have a question on four. So I was, I, I talked with Donna a little bit about this one, and it's kind of open-ended until we hit that $50,000, coming back to council. We, we discussed it, kind of chatted, and I, I don't, I don't, I have no issue with walls and strategic community solutions. I just, I'd feel a little more comfortable if that were more like a plus or minus 10% before it came back to council.
I think that's reasonable. So annually, we have spent around 30,000 to 35,000 for care services. Most of those related to the 2025 partnership management more than anything. So I think if you did a 5% or a 10%, that certainly won't go be problematic at all.
It's just my thought. If it, I mean, if it did jump, I, I'd actually, I'd kind of like to see.
We wouldn't agree with you.
What would jump, so.
Sure.
That, that was my thought.
Pull down.
I'd like to.
So you just may have got it then to mark for.
Just that, yeah, that would be, you know, as long as it's within 10% of, of the existing, then if, if it goes beyond then, then bring it to council.
Okay. Item five. Item six. Now we're done with regular hearing, item seven.
It's a great use.
And that's it.
We do have one hour for accept the decisions.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll reconvene at 7 o'clock in the council chamber. At 7 o'clock, we'll call tonight's meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a forum present. First item of business will be the invocation given by Councilman Gilmore, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels.
Y'all will join me in a moment of contemplation. Amen.
Remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item one, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from AO to LI on 17.130 acres located on the northeast corner of South Valley Parkway and Spinks Road. The applicant plans to construct a warehouse distribution facility. PMC recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Richard Ludke, planning director, is present and available to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning an approximately 17.130 acre tract of land out of the Peter Hermanson Survey, abstract number 530, located on the northeast corner of South Valley Parkway and Spinks Road, from agriculture open space district zoning to light industrial district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest in general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item two, public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from OTMU2 to MD on 0.448 acres located at 477 West Main Street. The applicant proposes a type B state license assisted living memory care facility. PMC recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I have Richard Ludke, planning director, and William Tabor, applicant, present and available to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Have a motion to close public hearing?
Move. Second.
Have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 0.448 acres, acres out of the JW Craft Survey, abstract number 295, legally described as Lot 1, Block A, Cowan Sleep Center Edition, located on the northeast corner of Main Street and Lynn Avenue at 477 West Main Street, from Old Town mixed-use two district zoning to medical district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest in general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item D, visitor citizens forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor, I have one speaker.
Okay.
Grace Kirby.
Good evening. If we could have your name and address for the record.
My name is Grace Kirby. I live at 1120 Breezewood Drive in Lewisville.
Go ahead.
I lived in Lewisville 23 years this month. I've got three children, whatever, I'm going through all that. I was just really shocked in, at the sudden and unexpected removal of all the trees, of the trees on the greenbelt park. Yes, I read some of the 2025 plan, and I participated in the park surveys. I find it hard to translate more, more green space access into cutting down large trees and removing woods that have been here for decades and propose to turn the woods into the sterile park with highly pruned and widely spaced trees with no bushes or habitat for the wildlife that's supposed to live there like they have over at the old orchard playground next door. Also concerns about the many, I'm also concerned about the many possible negative impacts of this decision on our lives. One, the reduction of our property values by removing view of the woods, which also blocks the view of the neighbor's alleys across the creek. Two, reduction of noise abatement effects of the woods on overhead airplane flyway and the I-35 traffic, which is only a mile away. Three, reduction of the soil retaining plants and underbrush will increase our risk of flash flooding and also increase sediment erosion, clogging Timber Creek and increasing instability of the soil near our houses. The biggest puzzle I have is if there's so many urgent reasons to cut down these woods and they're so undesirable, why is it two miles away in Flower Mound, dense woodlands inhabit every creek bed, back right up to individual houses, and closely border the walkways and jogging paths? Ditto with Cappell, where I moved from, and McKinney and the Woodlands, et cetera. Surely these other cities care about and have planned for the safety of their homeowners also. Why? Why are we doing the exact opposite? I look forward to working with the city to come to a mutually beneficial agreement on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another speaker.
Go ahead.
Jason. And I apologize if I mispronounce. Is it Pocatello?
It's Pocatello. Thank you. Sorry for the last minute.
We need to have your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, Jason Pocatello, 1156 Breeze Wood Drive. I back up to the Green Belt along Prairie Creek. And just walking around today, I have some pictures I can pass around at some other point. Maybe this isn't the proper form for it. I took some pictures this afternoon of the particular section of the, the Green Belt where they had started doing some clearing of the undergrowth. And basically showing pictures is the best way to show what was suddenly stopped after the community outcry.
If you apply those to city staff.
Yeah, absolutely. I would be happy to.
Okay.
Keith, if you would take the pictures.
What's, what's basically happening is west of Old Orchard, there's two tributaries that come together in a natural flood plain, and then it all channels down underneath Old Orchard Avenue and then comes into a much deeper channel together behind Breeze Wood Avenue. And there's a lot of undergrowth, especially on the north side, because the north side is a lot steeper. And there's been, there was a beginning of some, some pretty serious clear cutting of all the undergrowth, and many of the people on Breeze Wood Avenue are very concerned about future erosion issues by taking away the undergrowth, which is pinning the soil down. What I'm urging is further consideration and taking into consideration the topography of the area and the soil before making these big sweeping changes to the landscape of public lands, particularly green spaces, and in particular along natural flood control zones.
Okay.
So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And who should I give the pictures to?
Who do you want to give the pictures to?
Thank you so much.
To, to Keith Marvin, and Mayor Council if I could. So the project that they're talking about is part of a creekscaping program related to 2025. We are looking at the issues that have arisen related to this particular project. We do think the contractor working with the city did make an error and go way beyond the scope of the project. So I share some of the concerns that have been brought up by the neighborhood. We do plan to be out in the neighborhood in the next few weeks. Keith Marvin will be coordinating those meetings so we can have more discussion about it and, and what the proper actions are for this particular project.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Okay, go ahead, Patty.
Consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen still requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary.
Okay. Councilman Gilmore.
Mayor, I'd, I'd ask that we poll item four. I'd like to, like to decide on that one with a little bit of language change.
Okay.
Otherwise, I move to, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're now down to item four.
Mayor, I, I talked with City Manager Barron on this particular one, and while it, we do have the ability to go up to $50,000 before it gets reviewed by council again, I've felt a little bit more comfortable on these types of decisions, especially with consultants if, where the rates have stayed the same for quite a while. If we could be brought back into that conversation, especially with a consultant on this that speaks to the council quite regularly. So if there were a large jump above, let's say 10%, I'd like that to come back to the council just to see what's new or different as opposed to maybe it not coming back to us. So that's, my motion would be to approve this with the understanding that the rate, if, if the rate changed by more than 10%, that the city manager would bring that back to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item seven, consideration of a variance to section 2-201 regarding waiving rental and day pass fees at Herring Recreation Center. Chin Community Ministry is requesting a waiver of room rental fees and seeks, seeks free day passes to the Herring Recreation Center for a short-term youth workshop. Recommendation is that the city council approve the requested waivers as set forth in the caption above. I have James Kunki, Community Relations and Tourism Director, present and available to answer any questions, along with Becky Nelson and Patrick Booth with Chin Community Ministry.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions with the group? Oh, okay. We have a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good luck, everybody.
Item eight, consideration of a variance to section 9.5-98E1B regarding water line requirements for fire protection related to brownstones on West Walters Phase 2. The applicant is asking for variance to allow public water line to be installed underneath pavement. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. I have city engineer David Solomon present and available to answer any questions.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Chair will entertain a motion to.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And that's the regular agenda. We're down to reports now. Make it. You did enough before, did a good job there. Tim. Didn't know what to do without Russ being there. And the lake is down a little bit, I know that from what it was two weeks ago.
We're going to get rain.
My Gina, you understand it's going to rain now.
It's about to fill up.
I was pushing it down to Eric.
Okay. So. Eric?
Yes, you're just Mayor and Council. You may notice out on FM 407 and of course on Business 121 that the Texas Blue Ribbon, or Green Ribbon Grant Program is going on in the medians. So they have started, they moved on 407, so they've started that this week. So both properties simultaneous. I do not have a schedule of completion. The original one is, is behind, so I'll get an update, or the city engineer will get an update and let you know when they anticipate completion of those projects.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Daniels.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, yes, I'd like to commend our staff, especially James Kunki, and I know Melinda was out sick, but we attended the 18th Annual Youth Action Summit, or as our kids call it, the Yak Summit. It was the, the subtext was gain and sustain. It was a great event. It was all day. Our kids got up at 6:30 in the morning to get down to Cedar Hill, and they had a great time. They got to listen to former Olympic athlete Marion Jones tell her story of her rise, fall, and her rise again. Kind of give them a, a kind of a cautionary tale of, of listening to, to the right people and listen to the right advisors in your life. It was a great time. It was our first year. Mayor Frankie from Cedar Hill, who helped us kind of get this start, I saw him, gave him a pen, and he gave us a shout out on the stage. So it was a great time, look forward to next year.
Good. TJ.
Mayor, two quick things. First of all, this Friday, starting at about 11:30, City Council will be having its annual retreat, and we will be doing that on Friday and Saturday, and it will be at the Statler in Dallas. We're going to be getting some tours of some of the redevelopment in that area, so pretty excited to see different ways that we might be able to improve life here in Lewisville. But it is a public meeting, open to the public. I'm sure if you follow some of us on social media, City Council and, and the city staff page, you can get some information through that, and hopefully it'll be a, it'll be a good session. I think what is most interesting is that the change this year is, is going to be a little Shark Tank-ish. So if you watch Shark Tank, you'll be having an opportunity to see various council folks give some pitches on ideas that they're a little passionate about and would like to see if we can't move those forward. The second item is for March 8th. We have a great program called Wild Neighbors: Solving Urban Wildlife Problems. We share this planet with some pretty cool critters, and sometimes they can be a little intimidating, so there's some great tools here and resources for those of you who want to know better how to maintain habitat and how to exclude some of our, our friends who may be a little more aggressive for your pets. So coyotes and bobcats being, being in that, in that mix. But we got to share this place with them, and there'll be some great ideas on how to do that. Thanks, Mayor.
City Manager, are you having that?
I do not.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll do the best I can, I hope you can hear me. First of all, Friday night, we had our annual Chamber of Commerce Awards banquet. A little bit different event this time, a little more elegant than the typical luncheon. But I want to point out that our Citizen of the Year is our own Police Chief, and Russell Kerbo certainly deserved that honor. I notice he's not here tonight. I don't think it's because he's still celebrating too hard, but, but he certainly deserves to be named Citizen of the Year, and I think it was a great opportunity to see that happen. And then Saturday night, we had the Police Night of Honor for the various police awards. So it was kind of a all-police weekend, it seemed like. MCL Grand Activities, Texas Tunes continues on March 10th with Josh Greider. Black Box Concert Series features Emily Scott Robinson on the next night, March 11th. Public events, the Playreaders Club continues, and that's on February 22nd, presented by Art Productions Theater Company. The Multi-Generational Center Public Art Presentation will be February 22nd, presented by the city. PD Place is having its 2018 Gala Travel the World on February 24th. DFW North Cinderella Scholarship Pageant is on March 4th. Hope for Tomorrow Conference presented by Denton Area Caregivers Alzheimer's Association is on March 8th. And of course, Acoustic Fridays, every Friday night. Acoustic Jam, I should say, every Friday night, presented by the Visual Arts League. The Current Art Exhibits, LISD District Art Show is through April 14th, and the 2017 ASL Winners through March 3rd in the North Gallery Corridor. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing. Counselor? Do you have anything, Patty? Okay. Officer, thanks for your work in the community. Thank you. Now we'll go into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, item one, section 551.072, real estate property acquisition. And item two, section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We'll now go into closed session. We'll reconvene. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned, thank you.